We're going to just have a planning meeting tonight and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Those people that are here with us as well as those watching from their homes might notice that we've got some scrolling going on when we're not on with the speaker. We tried to put some public events on there that are upcoming and also some of the rules that we have that are recently instituted so everybody will be aware. So, we'll go ahead and get started. So Elfonso, lead us off.
Good evening. So I'll be presenting the, a quick overview of the draft master plan report for City Park. The draft master plan document is a long-range vision for City Park. The park has seen many transformations throughout its 160-year existence. So this master plan responds to the site's history, existing conditions, and community identified priorities. So this document begins with site inventory and analysis, with subsequent chapters describing community engagement efforts and concept development. The closing chapters describe the plan's recommendations, phased implementations, and budget estimate. The last time the City Park Master Plan was updated was in 2006 and that was done by RDG Planning and Design. Since that was last adopted, there's been numerous projects that have been completed in City Park. As design for those projects progressed, it became apparent that the existing 2006 master plan no longer provided adequate guidance. So in 2015, City Administration recommended a process to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to update the City Park Master Plan. The second chapter provides a brief site inventory and analysis. The site inventory and analysis are the first steps in the design process. The goal of this work was to document the existing conditions of the park and understand the relationship between those characteristics. And so there was a figure ground analysis done and that's to analyze park feature footprints and determine land use. In 2015, there was an inventory done of the trees in the park, something to assess the conditions. Then there was also a vehicular access and circulation and parking study, essentially a vehicle count in May and June of 2015. And so the traffic counts over the course of 21 days found an average of 187 vehicles parked in the park. This number ranged between 483 at its peak and 33 depending on the time of day. Currently, there are 572 parking spots within the park with 108 on-street totaling about 680 right now currently. And then the second chapter also includes the City Park Usage Study. So this was in collaboration with the Flint Hills Metropolitan Planning Organization. We used their counters to get an idea of how many pedestrians and bicyclists and vehicles and such were in the park. And this was done in the fall of 2017. The planning process incorporated numerous opportunities for the public to participate in the planning effort. Meetings were held at the park for public input into view concepts and development. About 40 different public meetings and two surveys with 1,900 responses combined was done in 2015 and this year, 2018. And we heard five key themes throughout this process. And number one was people wanted to see open space preserved within City Park. Another topic, and it was a big one, was the parking. Some people wanted to see the gravel parking spots that we have now. They wanted to see them paved and better organized. And some even wanted to just eliminate parking from the park altogether. But of course, we had to do some compromise there. The third is they wanted to see improved pedestrian and bicycle connectivity to and through the park. And then the fourth was a strong desire to make the park beautiful, to have rain gardens, garden spaces, flowers and such. And then the fifth was a longer swimming season with a year-round access to an enclosed covered swimming pool. So using the information collected through the public engagement process and the site inventory and analysis, multiple conceptual layouts for the park were developed. Concepts A and B were developed in 2015. So the master plan for City Park was paused toward the end of 2015 due to some questions raised in the master plan process back then. The community was interested in seeing a covered swimming pool and expansion of tennis courts in City Park. The Parks and Recreation Strategic Facility Improvement Plan supported this as well. However, the city was interested in determining if City Park was the most feasible to accommodate these amenities or if they would be better suited elsewhere. So the feasibility study of 2016 determined that Sequo Park was better suited to provide expanded tennis courts and an indoor swimming pool. So in 2018, we took Concepts A and B and created Concepts C. The process worked through four more concepts before finalizing the City Park Master Plan. In response to community feedback on the preliminary concepts, a final park proposal was prepared. This chapter highlights the proposed elements recommended for City Park. The focal point of this master plan is to create a space that caters to bicyclists and pedestrians. The master plan also enhances a variety of existing recreational and leisure activities while increasing accessibility. The community expressed interest in a park that restricts vehicular access and properly organizes parking in order to create more open space. And so as you can see here, with the proposed plan, we're looking to keep about 447 parking spots within the park with 158 on-the-street totaling about 605. Existing, as I had mentioned before, is about 572. So we are reducing the parking within the park by about 100, just under 130. So that kind of goes with what we heard from the public. They want to see more open space. They want to see, they want to eliminate vehicular traffic through the park. They want to, you know, make it more of a destination rather than just a parking lot, is what we heard. The Park Board brought up a couple of concerns which we had discussed prior, and that was about the paraded access through the park. So they wanted to keep that kind of access and we kind of responded that with keeping this, proposing that this sidewalk here be wide enough that when the parades do occur, we could open those up. We would have ballards in this area and those parades could go through the park. And then another item that the Park Board brought to attention was the accessibility of Arts in the Park stage. They felt that the current parking around there wasn't fulfilling the needs both for the Arts in the Park program and ice rink during the winter. And so here in this, here we see the land use. Existing is about 6.4 acres. With the proposed plan, we're going down about two. In regards to programs, space, and buildings, it's about the same. There is quite a bump from what's proposed in regards to sidewalks and trails. There, currently there are 1.8 acres and we would be bumping that to about 2.9. And then open space, we gain about an acre. So definitely following, this plan follows what we heard from the public engagement and we kind of see that throughout the Chapter 5. So to lightly touch on what is the final concept for the City Park Master Plan. They're on the northwest corner. We're looking to implement some irrigation within this open space so that it can be programmed for youth soccer, either practice or games. The ball fields would be kept in their current location. One of the concepts did have Baker moving closer over here to the north side to kind of have everything centralized to better cater to any kind of events that would occur. However, there was quite a bit of opposition in moving Baker Field quite a few years ago. So we wanted to move forward with that plan, to keep the ball fields where they're at but to enhance them. And those enhancements would be new dugouts, spectator seating. We would be proposing a new restroom just outside of Wilson. There would also be some bocce, a new bocce court. The tennis court that's currently there has three courts. We would bump that to four and then stripe it for pickleball as well. We would also implement another shelter with a vent lawn just north of the existing basketball field. So then as we go here to the west side, we are proposing that the entrance there at Leavenworth be open to create this flow of traffic that would, and parking that would accommodate a Baker Field and anyone really wanting to park and enjoy the park. As we move south, we have the sand volleyball, enhancements to the horseshoes. And then on the southwest corner, the urban meadow is more of a picnic area, a space that would be kind of in response to what's occurring now with the Johnny Call Plaza. So we'd kind of make those spaces relate to each other. And then there's also, we're looking to expand the playground and we're looking to propose a new nature play space as well. Now, the biggest reconstruction definitely would be parking around Weefalts Pavilion. We are looking to close down that 12th Street entrance. It is something that we are kind of responding to what we've heard from the Aggieville Master Plan. Not only that, from their traffic counts and such, there's really not a whole lot of people using this entrance. A lot of that is used for parking anyway. So we are looking to create this flow. This would be opening up the entrance there at Osage. We would make it one-way to better facilitate that accessibility to Arts in the Park and create more parking around Weefalts Pavilion, again, something that we heard within, from Park Board and from other members of the community. And then we are looking to repurpose the old park building. And so within the chapter, there are some images kind of showing those spaces, what they would look like. I do want to bring to attention this image here, kind of shows what would be the first phase, what could be the first phase of this master plan. And that is to close down Central Park Road and how that could be done using ballards for now. There would be about 40 spots, parking spots, that would be affected by this. That would be this one just south of Wilson and the other just south, just to the east of the tennis courts. The chapter also includes the plan that we received from Bruce McMillan Architects of repurposing the building. And then also includes the proposed changes around Johnny Call and what's intended for Johnny Call Plaza. So the phasing strategy for the City Park Master Plan hinges on a few external circumstances. Those items include the Aggieville Master Plan, a potential sale of Community House, a future stormwater project along 14th Street, tennis courts constructed at Sequo Park, community-driven efforts to enhance Arts in the Park, and a potential partnership with Manhattan Christian College to remodel Wilson Field. So the highest priority for the City Park Master Plan is to promote pedestrian and bicycle access to and through the park and eliminate vehicular traffic. Eliminating vehicular traffic through the park could be implemented today by, like I mentioned, installing strategically placed removable ballards along Central Park Road. The list of phases as shown here is more of a guide on how implementation could occur if all the proper resources were in place. Of course, the dynamic nature of community priorities and the future stakeholder involvement could potentially alter this list. Therefore, the master plan shall be flexible and to respond to the community's needs as they arise. So this chapter includes a budget estimate. This fifth chapter also includes a budget estimate for improvements shown on the final master plan concept. The high and low estimates of cost for each phase is shown. The cost of these improvements may vary depending on the size, quality, and complexity of the elements ultimately selected for each feature. A 20% contingency has been added to account for aspects for each project that are not known at this time. Some aspects of these projects could be completed by city staff or possibly in partnership with local organizations or volunteer groups, much like what we've seen with the Friends of Johnny Call and the proposed Johnny Call Plaza. And so tonight, we're looking for feedback on the draft City Park Master Plan report. Additional community input, I'm also welcoming that as well. This master plan was uploaded to the city website so people could contact me if they had any kind of comments. And we would be coming back to the City Commission for acceptance of the final master plan report in December or January in a consent agenda item. So now, let's see if anybody has any questions.
One quick question, just looking on the slide that goes over the City Park Master Plan implementation that has that list there.
Yeah.
First on 1D, can you just briefly discuss what you can about the potential sale of the Community House since that was something, it was picked up in the paper so I just want to make sure we address it in some capacity?
Yeah, so I'd heard, we'd heard that there was a private buyer potentially for the Community House. And so we have quite a bit of programming there now. So if that plan were to go through and we were to sell it to this private buyer, then we would definitely be motivated to repurpose the park building to kind of accommodate those, moving those.
Then that was my second question. What does the Community House have to do with the City Park Master Plan? But thank you. And then the last portion of this that I just noticed, and maybe it hasn't been hashed out yet, but in terms of funding sources, and I know this is a long-term project, CIP, Special Parks and Rec, and then donations and grants are listed. In the vision of the Parks and Rec Department and what they foresee in this plan, how much do you think is needed to be supported by things like donations and grants?
If we want to see things move forward, definitely that'd be something that we would rely on heavily. We did meet with someone, myself and a couple of others within the department, met with a gentleman who's interested in enhancing the Arts in the Park stage. And we are looking to make a partnership with K-State and they're going to do kind of a design charrette. So they're going to involve the architect students, the landscape architects, and the interior architects. And they're going to propose how the area around the Weefalts Pavilion could be enhanced. And so we'd be working with them on that as well. And again, this is someone from the community who wants to see this area enhanced. So we're definitely welcoming that and definitely want to be involved in that moving forward so that we could, you know, kind of guide to what we've heard from the community.
You kind of sort of answered my last question too there. You're doing pretty good. The last question was in terms of those donations or grants, would you foresee it being more like large benefactors giving to do things like that or something more like what we're doing with the Sunset Zoo where they have their own foundation and it's like small donors memberships-driven type of way? I guess I'm just trying to understand how much you're expecting to come from that area. So I know how much in that $4 million we're going to have to realize out of the general fund.
I gotcha. I don't know if Eddie or Wyatt would have a little bit something else on this?
I'll just quickly comment. I doubt that we're going to be able to secure benefactors to improve parking lots. Some of the items, I would be surprised for that path. You'll see some of these projects as well as our other parks and master plans and future CIPs as well. As we'll be balancing what we think we can make a request for out of the general fund or Special Parks Recreation Fund. Some of these items, we'll be working on ourselves in-house a little bit. When I look at sand volleyball, the sand volleyball was originally constructed in-house. So there's items that we are going to have to look at ourselves. The playground areas, we have several playground improvements, not City Park, but in upcoming budget years that we're funding with Special Parks Recreation. We just need to make improvements. So we're going to continually try to prioritize not just improvements in this park, but you've seen Lee Mill Heights, Roger Schultz Community Park, master plan improvements that'll be necessary there. And we know that Warner Park will be coming to you pretty soon. It's going to have to have improvements in budget funds there. So that's going to be part of that annual budget process request we make to the commission, whether that funding source is general fund or Special Parks Recreation or as any donors might come available. The Johnny Call project has been a great one. And that's an example of how we can accomplish some of these items that the community would just like to see occur.
I'd also add that as we have future maintenance, potential maintenance projects, I think those are opportunities to evaluate, whether maintenance or other CIP projects. I think those are opportunities to evaluate and get those against the plan. And so I don't know the specific example, but as, you know, the 14th Street Storm Sewer project Public Works has programmed in a future year, are there opportunities to piggyback on that project and accomplish something along that 14th Street corridor? As the road, as Central Park Road deteriorates over time and it needs to be repaired, rather than repairing it, are those funds better utilized in some sort of closure or removal rather than reconstructing a road that the long-term plan wouldn't call for? So I think there are some projects that we would have already in the CIP or would be forecasted anyway that could potentially be either repurposed or added on to, to get to the vision that this plan lays out.
Yeah, no, that helps. Thank you. My only comment, maybe this is just more out of my curiosity. I would be interested to see if there are certain projects, I totally hear what you're saying about you're not going to be able to raise money for parking lots, right? Are there certain projects within the master plan where we might be, like the Johnny Call project, where we might be able to do those things? And how much of, the percentage of those projects represent the entire total? That's just something I would be curious to see. But otherwise, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have several. I have several questions. First of all, I'm pleased that the City Park Master Plan is being finalized. That was one of the City Commission's goals this year and I'm glad we're working it in.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're getting there. I just, I, well, I have several thoughts, but one, I don't recall seeing in the materials or hearing the proposal to make that sidewalk between that north parking lot and the City Park parking, the pool parking lot continuous. And I just am leery of doing that. I don't want there to ever be a street there. And if we save the space and pave it all but just the middle piece, and it'll be so tempting in the future at some point to make. I just don't want the park broken up like that. I want a park of the whole and I'm very supportive of this comprehensive nature of the park. So, you know, I don't know how to say it any other way than just express that concern. And that's, and it goes right beside the tennis courts and I don't, several areas there that would seem. So it'd have to be 12-foot wide probably for a vehicle to pass through. And as far as I'm concerned, the city vehicles can go around too. You know, you're going to make the public go around. City vehicles have to go around.
Yeah, and absolutely.
You don't get to take a shortcut.
Yeah, those would be, there would be some kind of removable ballards here and right around here.
I know.
To kind of deter that and, you know, just have that open, the handful of times that we do need that kind of access through there. But yeah, I could see that moving forward.
It's my concern. And I've said it before, but it appears I have to say it again. I, the part about, so several years ago, the city determined that that park building was substandard. It was a series of add-ons and it didn't meet the criteria that we wanted for the city. And we wanted our employees brought over to the main city hall and we built this huge building on. Built an addition, I don't know, it's huge, built an addition on. And now we're talking about renovating that exact space and putting employees and programs back in there. So I guess, and we're talking about the vagary of the Community House. And I would just say that without something firm about the Community House, because I would really look to the Community House if you're going to sell it, that you transfer the money into building, improving maybe that building or, but I don't want it just to be this phantom thing that we talk about today and on down the road, oops, guess that didn't work out. But in the meantime, we've got, we've put a lot of money into the park building. I really am supportive of the historic nature of the Floral Hall. And I would like to make that a better showplace than a storage area or, I don't, I've never been in it so I can't tell you. I can't say what the inside is like, but I know over time, things deteriorate.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I, without that bird in hand of the Community House, I'm not willing to invest in the park building. You know what I mean? We're trying to be, following a little carrot that we might do this and I'd like something more firm. I'm glad to see the phases because it hasn't been that long ago that we built the parking area there by the Splash Park and the playground. And now we're talking about taking it out. I'd like for, you know, to, for that parking area to live its life, you know, and not take it out just because we want to do things like moving the furniture around at home, in the house, you know, the living room. We just want the couch over there. These are such big, high-dollar costs. We can't do that. So I want to exercise caution there. I guess I'd like to ask what programs you envision accommodating in the park building?
Yeah, so one of the things that when city staff spoke with Bruce McMillan Architects, we're looking to really facilitate our special populations programming in this space. This could also be partitioned. There would be a partition wall here. It could also be used for dance as well. There is also would be a rentable, essentially this whole building could be rentable by the public as well. But there'd be a conference room as well as some kitchen space as well.
And how many employees do you eventually envision would be located there?
Right now, I don't believe we would envision any employees in that.
There wouldn't be any full-time employees ever there. It would simply be programming, just like we use the Community House now. We don't have full-time staff. The reason, again, that we moved out of that building was because it was too small. We had multiple people that were doubled up in offices and there was just one unisex restroom there. And that was a lot of the reason that we had moved out of there. The building structure is still a usable structure. And so some of our interest in being able to reprogram that is it's an ADA accessible building and could have a little bit of remodeling that would make it a programmable space. If the Community House ever went away, we would need programmed space. And right now, Special Populations, we've had to move out of the Community House because the ADA lift is not working. And so we bounced that program around to different locations and it needs, it needs to be able to have a home at some time. So again, we've looked at the Community House several times at the possibility of maybe social services using that space or some other entity using that space. We don't know if that will ever happen. But if it does, we need to be ready to be able to. to move some of our programs. We used to have a We Wiggler's program that was in the community house, and it was a very successful and a popular program, but the state would not license that space, so we had to abandon that program. So, there's a number of programs that could occur in this building, but it would have to be repurposed to a certain extent to be able to accommodate those. So, we wanna be aware of that, and this master plan needs to be aware of that, as opposed to demolishing and removing, you know, this, this building.
I know that some of the initial drawings, you also proposed to move Jesse Baker Field, and I appreciate that moving, it is not in the final recommendation. But I also noted you have some enhancements in mind, so what are the enhancements for Jesse Baker Field?
Yeah, so it'd be more along the lines of looking to install more of dugout, something that, something that, I don't know if you've been out to Twin Oaks?
Yeah.
Out at Annenberg?
Sure.
Something more along those lines in terms of dugouts, spectator viewing would be, you know, what kind of seating would we want there, something a little bit better than what we have. Definitely concrete around the area to kinda enhance the, the flow of pedestrians to and through the area, as well as irrigating the lawn out there, and then potentially moving that fence that's currently there now.
Well, you, do you expect to have a dugout at the other two diamonds also?
Yeah.
Okay. I appreciated too, that the higher level of activity you plan seems to be located at Wilson Field, which is away from the neighborhood to the west, and more, I mean, Aggieville is a little loud itself, so, seems like lights and maybe sound, I don't know how, how it carries, don't get me wrong. I know that that neighborhood has been sensitive to Aggieville noise, but if we, so, would, there would be additional sound and lighting at Wilson and at the one on the west too?
Potentially, more of that could be implemented at Wilson. So, the, the ninth grade high schoolers, they, they practice out there, as well as the Manhattan Christian College. And there's been some potential talk of them coming forward and possibly enhancing Wilson Field with these kinds of, of different developments. These would be more for, for youth softball and baseball, so we wouldn't see, you know, the loudspeakers and such out there, potentially, maybe something we could be, that could be kept more towards Wilson Field.
Is the Rose Garden intended to be the same, pretty much the same as it is now?
Yes, that is, that is the plan moving forward. We didn't get a whole lot of comment as to, you know, we don't wanna really change what's there, they, they really like, I've heard people taking their, their wedding pictures there.
Yeah.
So, really like the space now.
There are, and there are certain times of the year that it's pretty special, and the rest of the year, you know, maybe the other 10 months, it's not as, as big a deal.
Yep.
Okay, with regard to the, I, I wanna be sure that we make, keep in mind the need for people who attend the Arts in the Park, who may be seniors, who are using walkers. I know there may not be enough parking places for all the people with handicapped stickers, heaven only knows. If they all descended, we wouldn't ever, we wouldn't have enough parking for that. But I do wanna make sure that our seniors, of the things in the park as a whole, I see the Arts in the Park as something that our senior citizens and our handicapped folks can come to and be, you know, participate in our park.
Absolutely. And that's something we've heard throughout this process, and that's kinda why we've gone through multiple concepts around the We Fall Pavilion and the Arts in the Park stage. We're looking to, to bump the parking around there quite a bit with, with those patrons in, in mind. We've also included a drop-off area where, where we could have that kind of, you know, i- i- if, if all the handicap spots are taken, you could go by and drop, drop someone off and then, and park elsewhere.
Describe the little patio that you want to build there on the east side of the pavilion. I couldn't find much about, just a reference to it, but I couldn't find much description for what, umbrellas I saw on a picture, but what else, what are you thinking?
Yeah, essentially, it'd be an extension of where the pavilion is now.
Yeah.
That was the other way. An extension of, 'cause right now, you, we, we have this space here, and it's just lawn. So, with the We Fall Pavilion, in those nice months, you could open up the pavilion and then have that, have that activity out in, in, outside as well, you know, with, with, with the patio area, with seating, just any kind of programmable space essentially.
Fixed seating, or movable seating, or awning, or umbrellas, or what?
We...
We haven't gotten there yet?
We haven't got there yet, yeah.
All right. I just wondered. Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I think the plan's fine. I, I, I think, you know, putting the bollards in there that, so the road can be used if necessary is a good idea. And I, I think the trail should be completed, I, I don't, don't fully agree, I'm not really worried that somebody's gonna turn that into a road if we put the bollards there that's in the plan. And, and it's gonna be squeezed in between, anyway, that basketball court and tennis courts, I, I couldn't see that ever happening in the long run. So, I think we should pursue that. And I, I'm fully supportive of trying to repurpose the, the old Parks Building for those programs, simply because this is probably still an asset. In my mind, the community building is a liability, and anybody that's crawled over that knows that that's just an accident waiting to happen as far as our budget goes, should we ever have to renovate it and put it back into usable condition? 'Cause it is just slowly deteriorating, so I'm hopefully optimistic that we can, in fact, divest ourselves of that building without doing any damage to the historical value of it. And I think that's part of the plan, and I think that's in the works to get done here before too long. So, so I think we're, we're well on the right step in this master plan.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Can I ask a couple of questions? I think just because it's been a while since we reviewed, and perhaps there's people listening that have kinda lost track of the process. So, if I remember, the, the tennis court is in a different place, right? We've moved it slightly to the east from where it was.
So, we have two sets of, two sets of tennis courts now, one here, and then the other, the other is right around this area there now.
Yeah.
So, this plan is proposing to bump it out just a little bit to the east, where we do have some space to do that, to incorporate a fourth, due to the loss of those three here, which wouldn't get implemented until the proposed tennis courts were implemented out at, at Seaco Park.
And can you say something about the use of the ball fields right now versus kinda what our expectations are in the future?
Yeah, in my discussion with our, our recreation folks, they're used quite extensively, especially for practice during the, during baseball season, softball season. So, there's, we've, I've heard comments of, you know, they're, they are a little bit aged, they could use a facelift, I've heard that. I've heard of a number of how many games we have out there, and I wanna say it's around the mid 300s, but I'd have to, I have that written down somewhere.
Okay.
But it is, the spaces are used quite extensively, because in one of our concepts, we looked to remove one of, I believe it was Miller Field, we were looking to remove Miller Field, and when I reviewed with our, our rec staff, they mentioned, they don't wanna lose any fields just because of how much it's used, how much the ball fields in City Park are used.
We talked about eliminating through traffic through the park, which I think is something that all of us pushed for from the beginning, but you also talked about bicycles and so on, so how does a bicycle kind of traverse through the park? Is it...
So, in that traffic, the, not traffic study, the pedestrian counts that were done back in 2015, they kinda, there were counters and it registered the, the, the traffic flow of, of the, of the bicyclists. And essentially, the two major thoroughfares for bicyclists was this north-south, we're assuming people going to campus, this was a strong spine, and so we were addressing that with, with this sidewalk here. And then another one was the east-west route, and it was mostly people here going off of Humboldt, and then just going through the park. And so, we wanted to kinda maintain that, that traffic based off of those counts, and so definitely we will be making those a little bit wider sidewalks to kind of respond to what we saw in the, in the counts for bicyclists.
You know, we're used to having races in the park too, you know, we've used that west side, so the people come through and, and turn the corner and go out the top of the park. And similarly, for the little kids, they come out of the, come out of the pool, get on, and go around, and then come into the top of the park and finish. So, when you talk about bollards, does that mean the road remains in place, you just bollered it off? So, we're not taking the concrete off?
No.
Or the asphalt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other thing was the, the log cabin and some of those historic things, are we doing any renovation? Those things are pretty paltry, actually. I mean, it's a log cabin, but there's nothing there. So, the enhancement of those kind of things, I think is important, we probably need a plan for that. And then, one of the things that I've talked about before is that circular thing that you have on the south entry to the park, I, I don't understand what that thing is.
The water fountain.
I think it used to have water in it.
Yeah.
And now it's, has dirt in it, so we need to do something with that. I mean, that's the entry to the park, and so it ought to have a little bit of grabbing power.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Part of the master plan, we actually, so with, in regards to the log cabin, we are looking to enhance the, the grounds itself around the park, make it more of, you know, what, what native plantings, something you would see back 150 years ago, out here in the prairie, as well as the historic drinking fountain, we would surround that with some plantings there.
We don't have to get too specific, I'm just...
Okay.
I mean, I'd like us to work with the Historical Society and others to maybe put some more things out there, 'cause the cabin all by itself is not very interesting.
Yeah, yeah, and, and definitely those lines of communication are open, working with them, and, and art as well, art installations, and that would be something that we would want in that, the round fountain there.
And then lastly, when we're talking about parking, say again the parking count that we currently have on average, and then, you know, I already know what the number is for what we're going to have, but I'm trying to get a, say again the demand that we have.
Yeah, so the demand was about 483 at its peak, so this was in, this was a span of 21 days.
Does that, I mean, does this count the people who perhaps are from Aggieville or across the street in the fraternity? It just, it doesn't discriminate, right?
No, it does not discriminate. It was, it was a count of all the, the parking spots within the park, and so we had 483 at its peak. I believe that was in, in the evenings, you know, when we had Arts in the Park going, the pool, maybe some games at the ball field, so when, when the park is at its fullest, there's quite a bit of vehicles in there now.
And then, on out-of-park parking, you know, we know what's on the east side, but what is the plan on the south side? Are you still doing, trying to figure out whether we're gonna do parallel angular parking and whether it's all-time or part-time?
Yep, we've had conversations with Public Works and working with Brian to potentially kind of extend what we have up to Juliet, you know, from downtown, possibly extend it all the way to 17th, so take four lane down to three. That's just an idea that the, the plan is proposing, so that we could kinda move that parking that we see in the middle towards the, towards the, towards the boundaries. And so, they haven't said no, and it is gonna depend on, on what traffic counts are through the area, but it could be a possibility to see a, a road diet for, for points.
Well, you know, when you go east on points, where you do have parking on one side, a lot of it's parallel on the other, so we've got angular parking on this side, right across in the park, which constrains traffic a little bit. We may wanna look at just when we have high-density events and otherwise allow traffic flow.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can do that at any time, it's just kinda how you wanna put signage up.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments? All right, well, let's, let's hear from the public, anybody wanting to comment on the park, please come up and say a few words, welcome to have you and hear your ideas. Well, you did such a brilliant job that nobody has any questions. All right, well, thanks very much, we'll close public comment. Any further comments before we move to the next item? All right, well, let's queue up the next item, which is the Rec Center Steering Committee. Will that be you, Eddie?
Eddie Eastus, Director of Parks and Recreation, and before we go into the next topic, I appreciate the input on City Park Master Plan, it's been a long time coming. We delayed it with our sales tax vote, but we're back on track, and yes, we recognize it as city commission goal, so we're pushing hard to get it completed and get it back to you. So, we'll make a few changes, make a few notifications, and bring it back to you here pretty quickly. The second topic tonight is Steering Committee update, to be the second one the city commission has heard. We've hosted four Steering Committee meetings to date, and starting to look at a little more detail on the outside of what these facilities could look like. Tonight with us is Barry Schmidt with Macallan Gordon, Tracy Anderson with Anderson Knight Architects. They delivered this information also to the Park Board at our last meeting, and we do have two more steering committees that will be hosted in late November and December. Also, and they'll show this in a, in a little bit, some of the, the next steps, going to the school board in December, and then back ultimately to you, the city commission, we're anticipating in January with the recommendation from that Steering Committee on what these facilities could look like. So, nice presentation tonight, again, we saw this at Park Board, a lot of information, so Barry, Tracy, thank you, thanks for being here tonight.
We can get you out of, into, is that it? You shouldn't let me touch this.
Doing great.
All right, good evening, I'm Barry Schmidt with Macallan Gordon Construction. As Mr. Eastus said, we've been, we're back in front of you all in late September, I believe it was, giving an update on what our progress has been to date, and looks like he's helping us out up there, thank you, appreciate that, having some technical difficulties. So, wanted to kinda give the, the commission and give you all an update of what the progress has been since that meeting. So, again, this is the, the two community recreation facilities that will be located at the two middle school properties here on the north side of town. So, since our last meeting, we've had a couple of Steering Committee meetings. We've discussed with the Steering Committee just several different aspects of the project, we've gathered some design feedback and some input from them on various aspects of the project, which include the site design, several different... which include the site design, several different amenities or additional programming opportunities, and then the actual aesthetics of the projects, the kind of what the building is going to look like on the exterior and the interior of the projects. We would be a little bit remiss if we didn't go back and revisit the budget. So number one is, the top line is the total available funding for the project, which is currently set at $17 million. We have a few of the necessary items, such as furniture fixtures and equipment, some art, some testing and inspections, permitting, those kinds of things that would need to be removed from that, which would give us a tally for the rest of the project. So we are currently evaluating or updating our estimates as we give this presentation tonight. So we'll be providing some additional information. I believe the next time we come back in front of you all, we'll have a full SD schematic design project with an updated budget of what the costs are expected to be for the project. So we've narrowed it down to the cost for both Eisenhower and Anthony and then the total site costs together. The site costs have been combined into one because the two sites are different. So we're making an allowance for both of those site costs. The very bottom number that you see, the $2 million remaining design and construction budget, these were the available funds that were options or amenities for the selection committee to bolt onto the facility or add to the facilities. And this would be for both facilities together. So approximately $1 million for each facility for the Steering Committee to select their preferred options and what the community and the neighborhoods would prefer for these facilities above and beyond just the basic requirements or the basic programming. And we'll revisit a little bit more on those in depth of what those were that were selected. So wanted to start with the site concepts for Eisenhower. At the last presentation that we gave in September, there were two available options. We, I believe, we actually had three or four different options. The sites were narrowed to two and then provided to the Steering Committee to provide their feedback and their selection, which, as it turns out, they, the option B was the preferred option for Eisenhower. And I think we want to talk a little bit about some things that have developed on this project since the last time we were in front of you all with regards to the Kirkwood extension as well as the middle school additions, which are, have been accounted for in this preferred option. Talk about, Tracy?
I thought the last time I saw the extension was on the other side of the building.
There were two different...
And so tonight, we're seeing... I know, although I know we talked about that Kirkwood parking lot. Maybe, maybe I don't. Maybe I'm not remembering right.
No, I think you're right. There's, when we initially started the project, the previous facility feasibility study had provided its output, which had the location for the Rec Center, sort of where option A shows it, but arranged in a couple of different fashions back there with access going through the school's drive and parking here. It wasn't until we started this project that we discovered that it might be feasible to locate it on the west side, primarily because of this Kirkwood extension, which I think is something that's just been before you within the last couple of weeks as potentially moving forward. So that's what allowed us to start studying that alternative. But when we went to the Steering Committee, we wanted to present several options, one being on the west side, one being where it had previously been studied, and get a feedback from them as to which one their preference was.
Because when it was on the east side, we talked about the idea of shared parking. So the school would use it in the daytime. Our programs would be at night. So this would involve then an additional parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was plans for expanding the parking lot as much as possible and even adding to the school's existing parking because Eisenhower, well, both maybe, but Eisenhower more specifically, I think, really suffers from a lack of parking.
Yeah.
And so there's always been the intent or the desire, though, that the facility have shared use during the day so that not only can the kids in the school use it, but also can our community use it. And so one of the solutions, not only just from how we're laying the building out internally, but where now we're able to look at locating it, makes that just so much more simpler and provides a greater amount of security. So people, patrons aren't parking in the school parking lot and wandering around it. So...
That's okay. I just wanted to...
Yep. You know, you were right on track.
Absolutely right.
Okay, thanks.
There's been probably four or five variations of this that have been developed.
One thing that was important that we gathered from the Steering Committee on the sites specifically was each of these recreation facilities needed to have their own identity and really be separate but connected to the middle school. So the link was obviously of concern because the school was needing to use the facilities. But they needed to be separate enough that they looked like they weren't just a big part of what the school was or an extension of it. So that was obviously of concern and why, one of the reasons that option B was preferred. So we had quite a bit of lengthy discussion on option B for this particular site. So the last component that we want to talk through on option B is the school addition. With the recent passing of the school bond issue, this gray box that is connecting between the orange, what would be the proposed recreation centers and the existing middle schools, would be the proposed additions to the middle school, to Eisenhower specifically, which works really well for the connection to the recreation center as well as what would be a feasible addition concept for the actual middle schools themselves. So we've had lots of discussion with USC 383 on what those additions could look like and how those connections could work. So...
And so just so you're aware, the additions that are shown in the similar gray, darker gray boxes on option A are what was developed by the school's consultant as a placeholder for the addition. One of the Steering Committee members was very... Or requested that we, when we went to the school board, that we talk to them specifically about that. Is that a sacred cow in its shape and layout? And the feedback we got back from some of the school staff that was there was that it's not. So whatever the future, whoever ends up winning that work, we've tried to arrange the building in a location. The square footages are very similar in size so that it can easily be attached on whatever shape that addition takes. So we've been trying to be very cognizant of that location and the ability to lay out a very functional school addition and allow that connection to happen.
What is the white box north of the school? Ours is yellow.
That's the existing tennis courts and basketball courts that are there.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Part of this project is they have an existing practice field, grass practice field that would be on the west side of the school. We've included relocating that practice field to the northeast corner of Eisenhower site due to the impacts.
Is there any issue with marlott ditch?
There's always an issue with marlott ditch.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. So you're just going to have to build up high enough to...
Yeah. We will be matching the school's elevation, which is above the floodplain there. There are parts of our site that are currently down in that. So there will be some importing and some raising of that.
Okay.
And there'll obviously have to be some big box culverts or something put in there. That's what our civil engineers are studying right now to give Barry and his team a little more information on the cost. Now, I say that, that would be a part of the actual road project and would not impact these facilities and their budgets. So it's really a win for us. We're not having to build a bridge necessarily, so...
We're proceeding with both, with this particular option under the assumption that the Kirkwood extension would be installed and the school additions would be installed from this point moving forward. Moving into the Anthony site, kind of a similar discussion took place on both the options. I believe we also had three proposed options that we took to the Steering Committee. It was really narrowed to two feasible site options. And again, site option B was the preferred option. Again, for several, several things, the connection to the school district or the middle school building was a much easier connection that allowed, still allowed connection and access to the fields from their, the existing school parking lot, as well as with the facility on the north side, kind of the northwest corner of the middle school, there were some impacts to utilities as well as daily operations for the school, such as food deliveries. That was their main delivery and ingress point for a lot of the support systems, support services that were feeding the school. The other component of this is the access to the parking lot. There would be, with option A, the access to the recreation center parking lot would have been through the school parking lot, which could potentially cause some congestion, some issues with getting cars in and out, vehicles in and out, going through the school parking lot. So moving this, the building in the parking lot, the proposed Rec Centers in the parking lot to the south side of the site, did a couple of things. It separated the public parking from the school parking. It also provided a better connection to Browning Avenue, which is a main artery street versus a kind of a side street of Pecan Woods. So this one actually has a turn lane down the center of it. And in gathering feedback from Public Works, this was a preferred option from their perspective as well. A couple of considerations that we have on this particular site. The area that the parking lot is located in is currently classified as a detention, stormwater detention area. So we're currently analyzing the impacts of putting that parking lot in that particular spot and what that might mean if we need to relocate a potential storm detention basin to the west or provide some sort of underground stormwater detention underneath that parking lot. So we're analyzing those things currently and hope to have those answers completed and be able to bring those back to you all in January with some definitive answers.
And again, on these two, with option B, we're able to bring the gym or the Rec Center in at the same elevation as the school. On option A, there was around a six-to-eight-foot elevation gain to where that building would be located, which would make it problematic with that connecting link as well. So option B, again, worked out much better. Want me to take over?
You can talk to the floor plans. That'd be great.
So this is conceptually where the floor plans are today. The Steering Committee has been presented with this plan at our last meeting. They had several comments, some good feedback. And we're taking that back and that's, we'll be making those changes and then re-presenting that at our next meeting, which I believe is next Monday. But as you can see, the building is starting to take shape a little bit. The center core area, again, was the solution we came up with to help provide security from what the two gyms. And in this image, that's the two gyms on my right, so I guess it'd be your right as well, that the school would have access to during the day. And then the two gyms on the left would be the gym area that would be open to the public all day or whatever other programmed uses Parks and Rec might want for that space. And on the lowest level, so we've got the courts. And there's quite a bit going on in those images. I won't try to say everything that's going on, but they're striped to show basketball, volleyball, pickleball. And there may be one other in there that I'm forgetting about, but how those could all be laid out in there. And then we've got the center area that's kind of in that pink color would be the Parks and Rec staff area. There's some open area in there. There's a couple of dedicated offices. Then we've got bathrooms shown to the right of that that would be accessible to the student or the school side during the day when they're having classes in there, obviously open to the public whenever the public's on that side as well. And then the public bathrooms to the back. And then off to the left, these right here would be family bathrooms and/or referee bathrooms when there's tournaments or something like that. We're showing some open spaces that can be used for numerous things. We're just, they can be activated or programmed as anything, really. But it's just open space where seating arrangements can be done. It's where teams, when they're done with practice, they can go out there and get off the court so other teams can get on. And then they can have their debrief from their practice or it can be a staging area if there's tournaments, things like that. Also, for after-school programs, maybe there's some activation of that space. And we have a large stair. In this instance, the stair goes up from this side. We're going to actually turn that around in the next iteration so that when you come in, you can easily see how you would go up to the open area up here. If we jump upstairs, there's a track area, which only goes around this half of the building. Again, it resolved the security issue of being open or having to have doors that close off half the track during the day and open it back up. But we've got two multipurpose rooms, a storage area, concessions area, and some bathrooms up there. And then some open, again, some more open space that during practices or tournaments or things like that, people can sit up here and look over the guardrail that's there and watch the game. And then also some open space here that could be activated for a Pilates class or a yoga class or Zumba or whatever they want to put in there, as could the multipurpose spaces. So we're trying to leave some flexibility in some of these spaces so they can be programmed as multiple different things throughout the week. Think, and some of the comments that we got back from the Steering Committee is, can we flip some of this around so the concessions area can be adjacent to one of the multipurpose rooms? And so you could have it open to the multipurpose room and to the viewing area. If somebody wants to put on a cooking demonstration class or something like that, they could set up some countertop equipment in the concessions and put on a demonstration class. There's been some thought about that. We're not putting in a full commercial kitchen, just to answer that question here and now. But it'll be used as a concessions kitchen. I think... There's an elevator in here. Yeah, yeah. Yep, no, it's tapped down right here. And so that might get shifted around a little bit as well when we move some of that stuff around. Yeah, absolutely. So that's where the plan is currently. Again, it'll be getting modified just a little bit with some of the feedback from the Steering Committee that we heard last time for this next presentation that we're going to give them. There's, on this lower level, one of the comments was, could we figure out a way to try to get all of the plumbing back in this zone? And there's also concern about, do we have enough storage? So we're going to start laying out some of those equipment requirements and make sure that we have enough storage. If that means we have to push things up a little bit or maybe even do a small bump out on the back here to get that storage space we need, we'll take that into consideration in this next go-around.
So briefly, we touched on some of the available amenities or some of the options that the Steering Committee was able to select that would be able to enhance these two facilities. And a couple of those options, let me kind of back up here. And a couple of those options, let me kind of back up here. This floor plan that you're seeing right here currently reflects the options or the amenities that have been selected by the steering committee. We've already taken those into consideration, both on a design and a cost perspective. The pictures that we're going to look at here briefly start to give you a little bit of a visual on what those amenities were, some of the available options, and just some of the discussion that went around those. So probably the largest one that sticks out, that the steering committee was interested in, was the walking track, both, or I should say, either an option that was on grade, on the first floor, on grade, or an elevated running track. The selected option was an elevated track, which has been accounted for. Courtside seating, which would be reflected kind of in this lower right-hand picture here on the bottom right, which would accommodate some spectator seating that could be utilized or could use kind of a tip-and-roll bleacher or portable bleachers setup, give some floor space for teams to kind of gather or stash their belongings between games. Additional, excuse me, mezzanine or spectator seating on the second floor was also a strong desire that had come out of the steering committee. So kind of going through these pictures here, this upper left would be the elevated or the mezzanine viewing platform, viewing area, that would overlook the courts. The upper right hand would be kind of a concept of what a multipurpose room or a concessions area could potentially look like. Look, bottom left, and these are all available options that have been selected by the steering committee. Bottom left is the multipurpose room, which could potentially have a warming, you know, some sort of cabinets or movable tables and chairs. And then the bottom right represents a couple of things, which we've talked about, the additional courtside seating. Turf, field turf, portable turf was one of the options that was selected by the steering committee for half of the facility at this point. The netting, which would also include court dividers, which just provides additional options for programming space of the court. So in this particular picture, it's representing indoor softball. There would also be netting for potentially what they're considering high-velocity sports, so baseball, golf, pickleball. Soccer. Probably some sport that we're not even familiar with yet.
Do they stay up all the time, the netting? Is that something that's permanent?
They are retractable, so they can be moved up and down.
Do they raise them?
Yes, they can be raised. Now, there are some things like batting cages or batting tunnels, soccer goals, some of those things that are smaller profile, that would be portable, that would be able to be taken down, put away in the storage area. One of the things that we are currently working through is just the turf storage area right now. That's program space that we are, we're working through, kind of going through an analysis of what, what are the storage requirements going to be for all of the sports that could potentially be programmed in this facility, and then to accommodate the turf as well. Got a little bit out of order there. So next up, we'll talk about, I'll have Tracy talk about kind of the exterior aesthetics of the building and what the steering committee has provided us feedback on.
So we presented, we asked the steering committee to come to a meeting, two meetings ago, and bring some ideas of what do they want these facilities to look like? What are things either in our region, in our community, that we might draw inspiration from as the designers? And we had a few bring some imagery, but what we did do is end up getting into some really good discussion with them. And we ultimately went back and developed three scenarios, or three exterior scenarios, came back and presented those to the steering committee. And shifting ridge lines, which sort of harkens to the Flint Hills a little bit, is the one that won out. Out of all the steering committee members that were there, I think it was 11 votes to two votes for the other options, so it clearly won hands down. And what that has to do is just, the ridges of the building will look at offsetting those to help give it. So it doesn't look like just one big monolithic form sitting there, because these are going to be very big buildings. So how do we break that mass up a little bit was the desire there. We're also showing on these, how do we tie them into the school using maybe some of the similar brick basentry that's on the schools, or even introducing a little bit of stone, since that's very prevalent in our community. But how do we also then introduce natural daylight? And so some of what you're seeing is, you know, brick coursing that maybe matches up to the height that it is on the school, and then some daylighting panels above that, possibly even some daylighting panels on the ends to get, and this is an example of what those daylighting panels could look like. Local examples, if you've been into the gymnasium of Amanda Arnold, there's the clear story on that is a similar product. Also, Fire Station Three's tower is made out of that product. It's an insulated wall panel system that lets diffuse light come through. So we're looking, we're going to study how much of that we can do, where's the best placement for it within the facility. Each facility has a different orientation, so we're going to have to take that into account as well. Trying to give the main entrance a little bit more of an identity, having some sort of overhang element that allows you to be out of the weather as you're getting to the front doors, but probably a fair amount of glazing or windows there. Aluminum storefront type of system or curtain wall system is what I would imagine we'll see there. This is showing an exit stair that's on the far corner of the building. That exit stair very well may end up on the backside. You know, some of those things will work themselves out. But that's how we started to try to tie some of these elements together and give them their own identity, but also let them relate to their context and to the school building there. Some just other elevations showing, you know, how those match up and the size of these buildings compared to the size of the schools there. These are big structures, so you can see how we're looking at. If this is the existing school, do we start to match that line with our masonry and just take it up to a certain point? Same thing here. And then how do we delineate our entrance? Granted, the school's entrance is on the other side of this, but, well, no, it's not. It's on the same side. So how do we delineate that from our school or our building and make sure that there's no confusion?
We're going to change subjects here real quick. So if you guys have any questions on the aesthetics or the design of the buildings, be a good time for it. So to wrap up tonight, I just wanted to talk through the current projected schedule as well as kind of the upcoming activities between now and when the projects would actually begin construction. If you look kind of up here in the upper left-hand corner, this second yellow bar from the top would be the period of time that's taking place this fall and into next year, where we're gathering the opinions and input from the steering committee. So we've got two steering committee meetings remaining. One would be on this coming Monday, the 19th. The final meeting would be December 10th, as well as a couple of other meetings to keep the Parks, City of Manhattan Parks and Rec Advisory Board, as well as USD 383 informed of the progress and where the final designs or the final schematic designs are landing. And then the last, the third bar here would be a placeholder for late January, where we plan to be back here in front of the city commission with the final schematic design as well as a steering committee member that would be able to make a recommendation that this project be approved. So currently, we're projected to be out here in front of you, January 22nd of 2019. From that point, we have kind of a programmed hold in the project for the majority of 2019. The design-build team, Account Gordon, Anderson Knight Architects, and SFS Architecture will be kind of doing a lot of things in the background, behind the scenes. We'll be finishing the design. We'll be onboarding the rest of our trade partners or our subcontractors that will actually be performing the work and bidding those things out. We'll, of course, keep everyone informed, and there will be public notices of those activities when we go out for solicitation. And then in early 2020, we'll be working through the building permitting process and laying the groundwork for actually starting the construction that's slated for kind of spring, March, April timeframe of 2020. And want to point out that part of this process has been by design. These were sales tax projects. They were part of the sales tax for Parks and Rec. So the funding mechanism is, if I understand it correctly, is we actually need to gather revenue from the sales tax to be able to pay bills for the project, so.
Fluid.
Yes. Can't build something if we can't pay for it. So that's our current schedule. These are, will be constructed for most of the year 2020, and then hopefully be open for construction around the first of the year of 2021, early 2021. So as we stated, here's the list of the upcoming workshops and meetings that we have remaining. So our current plan is to be back here in front of you in late January of 2019. Kind of strange to be talking about it already. So I'd like to open it up for any other questions or comments.
Questions, Cam?
Just have a quick comment. Didn't have a ton of questions, just because this isn't vastly different than the last update, but we're chugging right along and everything seems to be in order. I just do want to point out that I really do like the site concepts, the preferred options that they came up with. One of the things that I've thought about during this whole process is, and you kind of alluded to it, is how do we make sure that people understand that these buildings are distinct from the school buildings and are accessible to the public? And I think both of those concepts illustrate that maybe a little bit better than what I had thought I had seen in the original kind of four that we were shown up at the top. So I really like these ideas. The only thing that I would encourage that you consider, and I know that you're considering it, but just give more thought to it, is there's such a transient population, and so how can we make sure that these buildings are distinctive enough that someone understands that they're separate? If, I think back to my high school, my high school gym, and it's quite big, and it's kind of distinctive from the school itself, but it wasn't accessible to the public. So when I was a freshman or sophomore in college and I came here to Manhattan, I don't know if I would readily understand that those buildings were accessible to me, right? Because it kind of seems similar to how my high school is laid out, so why would a middle school be laid out any different? So I don't know how you accomplish that, but I'm glad that you're thinking about it, and I would encourage you to keep discussing it. So that's really the only thing that I wanted to say, and I think all the work that you're doing is great, and I'm really looking forward to seeing the kind of final version that comes to the commission. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have been very pleased with the Northview Action Group, Action Team. And that they, I hear from them that they're coming to the meetings and having input. And so I'm, to me, that's a really good thing, that they're pushing for some things they really want. I'm pleased with both of the concepts. I think they represent what we had in mind with the sales tax originally. I understand what Jared is talking about too, about how we name things and how we, maybe that's, maybe the solution to giving them an identity would be how we name them from the street or, you know, materials. So at some point in time, I'm sure we're going to be talking about Kirkwood Road and the bridge, but I won't get into that tonight. Sure, there's a cost associated with that, but I'm glad that it's. Well, I think we're interested, and especially interested in this community space. I did have a question maybe for Eddie. As we talk about concessions, are we going to be signing a contract for a sole provider? Or are we going to allow community groups to bring in, like Potluck, or can we, how usable is this space? Or have you even gotten there yet?
I think all those options should be considered. I will say that I'm not real excited about having two more full-time concession stands, though, honestly. There are a lot of models that the high school uses, a lot of high schools use, where they allow potentially, when there's a tournament that's occurring, that different organizations are able to utilize those concessions, maybe for a fee or percentage, and they operate those to benefits of whatever the organization is, a lot of what K-State does right now. So I think that's, those are models that we need to consider as well. What's important, and Tracy, Barry have both said this many times, that every single thing that we construct is very flexible, and so that it can react to a lot of things. That concession area, through steering committee meetings and their perspective, and yes, the Northview Group, also the flexibility for it to be able to accommodate groups that might bring in their own items. And that's why we talk about the flexible, maybe holding ovens, warming oven, those sort of things, so that can a reception come in there? Can a catering come in there? And as we've gone around and toured an awful lot of facilities across the east part of the state and Kansas City, a lot of them don't really have concession stands as what we're familiar with, but they have what I'm speaking of, that flexible space that can accommodate whatever group wants to use that type of space. And I believe we're kind of working towards that direction.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
No, I'm quite pleased with the plan. I think it came out exactly, it answers that one main question people concerned about was, will this thing actually work, or the public can use it and the school can use it at the same time? And there were a lot of people worried about that. But you basically nailed it with the design, the way that's set up with the gyms on either side and the security and the access, you know, so the school gets in one way, the public the other way, and it can work simultaneously, and so that's outstanding. And the other thing I like about it, and I took a class way back in 1980, you know, school administration, and one of the interesting things was the professor was pushing this idea of joint-use facilities, and this may be the first time I've seen that. So I'm pretty pleased with that. We talk a lot about collaboration, but actually turning into something constructive, very difficult. And this is one of the first projects I've seen that's actually done that, so great work.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of questions here. Eddie, can you remind us with the .25, what that equates to per year in revenue? Is it 2.5 million?
It was 2.75 is what it envisioned, but I would say, if Bernie was here, currently, we've outpaced that, and we've collected an amount that would generate closer to 3 million a year at this point. Very early, obviously, but that's, that's good to see. We projected a 2.75 a year.
Obviously, we have some trails and other things that are in this mix, but that kind of will drive what you have up there for a timeline, so need to keep that in mind, be a little flexible. Is the contingency for this built into the site and the construction cost, or is it somewhere else?
The contingencies would be built into the total project costs. So within that $17 million, being cognizant that the maximum amount that these projects could expand is 17 million.
I'd just like to see that carved out, just to, you know, I know what the standard is, but it's good to see it in there, so it's, we know that there's some set aside there. Locker rooms? When you talked about the restrooms down on the first floor, are those actually locker rooms too, so that folks could change in there, or not?
They're not. We had discussion on that very item, and ultimately, what we were told by the steering committee, and I think even by some staff that's gone and visited other facilities, is kids don't use them. And so, and really, adults don't either. Now, the two family restrooms that we have on there will be all-in-ones, where they will have a shower and a changing area and toilet and sink. have a shower and a changing area, and toilet and sink. So if somebody does want to go in and actually take a shower there, there is that capability of doing that. But to put in full locker rooms, that was one that most people said they won't get used if you do that. And even our recreation consultant said we're rarely ever doing that anymore in community rec center, so.
Some of them I've been in, you know, you don't want people wearing their same shoes that they walked in from the parking lot onto your floor, so.
Yeah.
Storage, if you want to store it under the bleachers or something, that's fine.
There is, well, most people just throw them in their duffel bag or something. They might go into the bathroom and change, or something like that, but there is discussion about possibly the small, you know, wallet.
Right.
Lockers and stuff, where you get a renewable code, and you can put your valuables in there. So some things like that, but not a full-on locker room.
And then, you know, on Eisenhower, when you had Plan B, it came, the kind of, if you will, the connectivity from the school through the addition into the, into the gym was from the side. So that kind of aligns with your, with your later schematics of the bottom and the top floor. So when you get to Anthony, the addition, the school addition comes in at the end. So the schematic then suggests that they have to come in to the end of the gymnasium. Is that what you propose?
Well, in both cases, it'll come into the gymnasium. So yeah, here, obviously, it comes into, you know, it could come in on Anthony, anywhere along this side of the wall. And then on Eisenhower, it would most likely come in somewhere along this length of wall.
I just thought one of the things you were trying to do is bring it through what you might call an admin section first, before they went out into the courts, but.
Not for the, even if we go back to the site plan, so even on this original, the connecting links that were shown from the facility feasibility study, what's the Anthony slide? You know, showed it similar to this, and you would just be coming into the backside of the gym. Now, there'd be secure doors there that.
In those initial ones, we weren't specific about where it came in. That's where, you know, just assuming that we'd come into an admin area before you went to a court, but.
Al, I don't think that there's a need for that during school use time, because your students are always going to be with a teacher.
As long as those screens are up, and you don't have people wanting to cross the end of the court, that's what I'd be concerned about.
Right.
And then, I'm not sure I'm a big fan of your shifting ridge lines. I just want to, I don't want us to have style when it's going to cost us money. And, you know, most pre-constructed metal comes in an apex shape.
Yep.
Not an offset, so I just think we need to keep that in mind. And it's also important, when you're looking down the center line of your court, to have the highest spot in the middle in most cases, so.
Yep. We've actually been talking about that since we conceptualized that, and my hunch is that both gymnasium sides will end up exactly what you've described, and maybe it's the center core that we're able to do something to minimize any of those expenses, and maybe it ends up just being a higher ridge line, or something like that. So we're looking at, because as, as that scheme was being, or that concept was being developed, they reached out to their pre-Asian era metal building contact, and he said, there is a price to doing that, just like you suggested. And so we're looking at, how can we get a similar look and feel, but maybe not incur that expense?
And in keeping with a couple of the other comments, when you're trying to separate or make sure that the public knows that this is at least partially their building, if not all their building during some times, I think where you've got this thing connected, which is a good idea, I mean, I fully endorse that, but you may have to do it with color.
Yeah, yeah. We haven't even gotten into those kinds of discussions yet.
And you, one of the things you did, which suggests it's all part of the same, is to run the brick trim line all the way down the side.
Yep.
But it may be that, in order to give distinction, you want to do that slightly differently, and have it be unique from the school building itself, and the addition. The last point I'll make is something we've talked about before also, and that is, whatever you build this thing out of, it's got to be material that's sturdy and is going to last. The same for our systems. You know, we just can't tolerate things that are going to break and wear out real quick, because we don't, the maintenance funds are going to be the trick in the future years.
Yep.
So it costs a little more in the beginning to make it, you know, so be it. But I mean, there's algorithms that tell you about the total lifecycle cost or something.
Yep. And those were definitely on the discussion items when we met with the core and the city team about that.
Just one more question. You've basically estimated that the site preparation cost is going to be the same, a million dollars per location. Is that really true?
No, not exactly. We've lumped the site prep cost for both into one number, knowing.
That one may cost more than the other.
Anthony may cost a little bit more than Eisenhower, but what we want to do is ensure that the cost for the structures are equal for both sites.
All right, good, thanks.
So that's why we've done it that way.
I just doubt if they're equal.
It'd be real coincidental if the site development cost ended up being exactly the same.
Wouldn't that be nice, yeah?
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. We'll call for any public discussion, unless, unless Bruce has anything, I think we're...
And I would, Mayor, I would say thank you from the previous presentation for thinking of the triathlon for the kids, and how that might impact it, but regardless of what happens there, we will develop a course that accommodates it, so, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
So no public comment, we'll close public comment period. And any further discussion from commission? All right, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.